Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We had a little workshop prior to this, so we're running it a little bit late here. It's 6:05. We're here at the Granbury City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Pastor Mary Carden with the Brazos Convenient Ministry to lead us in our invocation, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance with the Texas Pledge and the United States Pledge, led by Tony Mobley. All rise, please.
I want to give thanks and honor to our city council and our mayor. You are so appreciated and prayed for very often. We really appreciate you. Father, we just thank you tonight, first of all, for this beautiful city you've put us in. We are so blessed. Thank you for each component, Father, for the gifts you have in this city, Lord, for the creativity that you've placed and the people you've brought together. So, Father, tonight, I just say, would you pour out a blessing of wisdom to these servants and to the people here? Father, that wisdom would come to bless this city? Father, to see this city prosper and to see this city represent a goodness all across the land? Father, I thank you that Granbury is known as a city of love and a city of prayer. And we just say thank you. We thank you and we bless your name here tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'm going to go down to the podium there. I'd like to call upon Madeline Cano. Madeline is the director, one of the directors, founder of the Lake Point Academy, is that right? That there? Resource Center. And they're, as you know, they're getting ready to do their Lights Up the Blues, the fifth one, is the number five?
Fifth, pardon me.
Five years now, yeah. So, I think there's still room for more, right, up there? Or are you sold out already?
Uh, just a few.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, a few more seats.
But we're going to read an official proclamation to honor the job that they're doing out there. The proclamation reads as, whereas our city is a community of compassion... I'm sorry, I think I picked up the wrong one, didn't I? Madeline? Was this the right one? Yeah, that's right. One more chance, break. Okay, we had two of them come through here. Whereas our city is a community of compassion and dedicated to being a wonderful place to live and raise a family, and whereas about one in every 68 children is diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder, and about one in six children in the United States had a developmental disability in 2006 to 2008, ranging from mild disabilities such as speech and language impairments to serious developmental disabilities such as intellectual disabilities, cerebral palsy, and autism. And whereas it is known that with proper education, training, and community living options, individuals with autism can lead distinguished productive lives in their communities and strive to reach their fullest potentials. And whereas our community supports increasing awareness of these challenging disabilities and fair funding for research and services for those in need, and whereas our city would like to commend Lake Point Resource Center Incorporated and Lake Point Academy Incorporated at Lake Point Granbury, a non-for-profit private therapeutic school who provides educational and therapeutic support for children with special needs in our community. And whereas Lake Point Academy's philosophy, in part, is that each student has the ability to learn skills needed towards personal achievements and should be encouraged to reach their fullest potential. Now, therefore, I nenuet the mayor and the city of Granbury, Texas, to hereby proclaim April 2017 as Autism Awareness Month, and I encourage Granbury citizens and businesses to join Lake Point Granbury, as well as buildings and landmarks around the world, in Lighted Up Blue on April the 2nd, 2017, to increase understanding and acceptance of autism spectrum disorder throughout April. Given under my hand is the seal of the City of Granbury on this date, the 21st of... We have this official proclamation for you. I could tell Councilman Couch is pretty versed in getting dogs to smile there. I heard you up there saying, trying to get him to smile, right? You've done that before with yours, right? Okay, at this time, we'll go into the consent agenda. First item being, consider approving the city council meeting minutes of March the 7th, 2017, regular meeting. The second item is to consider approving InstaForm Technologies LLC Change Order 2 to amend the existing contract pricing of the 2015 sewer rehabilitation project by accounting for the remaining metal arc pipe burst segments to utilize the remaining funds. And our third item is to consider approving ordinance 17-18, providing for the revision of Section 1.50.651 airport hangar fees of the city's master fee schedule. So, council, you've seen, had an opportunity to read through the consent agenda items. Are there any items that you'd like to discuss or pull off at this time?
Mayor, I'd like to ask the question on item number three. I don't think it's necessary to pull it off.
Okay, Councilman Allen, go ahead.
It just says here that where they're going to bring the hangar rent from 250 down to 200, and then it says typo area, but it doesn't have a correction on it. 250 to 225, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And what's your question?
What is going to be the price?
Gary, can you answer that one real quick for us?
I didn't hear the last part of it.
There was a typo on the 250 to 225?
Yes, sir. It's just a little housekeeping item. We've been charging 225 since October 1st, and it's just a typographical error that we had, that we just wanted to change from housekeeping. The main purpose of this agenda item is to raise the square feet from 18 cents a square foot to 20 cents a square foot for land to be developed.
Okay, what have we been charging for the hangar in the past?
225. In the past, 185.
Okay, so we're going up at 225.
I'm sorry, 150. It was 150 to 225.
Okay.
Okay. And what will that do for our budget for this year by doing that?
It's about a $3,000 deficit.
Okay.
So, the 250 was the typo, okay.
No problem. I just didn't understand. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Council, any more questions on the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, council, on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move into the deliberation agenda. The first item being, consider all matters incident related to the insurance and the sale of the city of Granbury, Texas, combination tax and surplus revenue certificates of obligation Series 217, including the adoption of ordinance 17-19 authorizing the insurance of such certificates of obligation. Chris, do you have some staff report on this?
You bet. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ava Gregory and John Martin to step forward and go through the process, whoever can present. As y'all are aware, this bond issuance is to pay for the water pipe infrastructure that's needed to distribute the water from the new water treatment plant.
All right. Thank you, Chris. I will definitely let John Martin, our financial advisor, and also, as you said, Joey Durker is here as well, from Hilltop, to give you all the update and ask, Chris, that we have been working on these issuance for a while, and it's for the water distribution, extension of our water distribution system. And the funding has been finalized. It has been approved by Texas Water Development Board. We received the interest rate, and I think you received an update on that, and John will walk you through the numbers.
Thanks, Ava. Good evening, council. This has got to be the fastest water development board loan ever done.
John, can you go ahead and enter yourself into the records of who you are?
John Martin with Hilltop Securities.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. This is, as I was saying, this came about very, very quickly. We had a great team. I have to commend everybody involved. My partner, Joey Durker, did a lot of the heavy lifting on this and getting the application in a timely manner, and Ava and her staff were great. The engineers and then, you know, the water development board is, they're a lot easier to work with these days in the way that they have their procedures and so forth, and the way that we have to file documents and things like that. These are, come from originally the old EPA grants, is where these state revolving fund programs come from. So, there's a lot of federal paperwork and junk like that, and you can imagine how you can get so bogged down in all that kind of stuff, and all these, you know, Form 1217 and stuff like that, that it has to be done. And so, there's a lot of hoops and things like that. Everything went very, very smoothly, and so I just wanted to, you know, there was a great team, and this went very, very smoothly. I've provided everybody at your seats a little handout, just showing you, and this is similar to whether we do a privately placed, like this water development board type loan, or we do public offerings, that the way that the water development board does this is, we are, because the funds are leveraged through the revolving fund, you get much lower interest rates than what we can provide in the open market. The water development board does have an origination fee there, as you can see, of $330,000. It comes right off the top there, kind of like a discount on a mortgage type deal. And then, so what's available for the project, we're estimating to be $14,529, and then after a cost of issuance of 140. What happens, though, in this case, at closing, that whole sources of funds, the $14,669, almost 670, goes to the escrow account, and then for, there has to be requisition, again, it's a federal program, and so funds have to be requisitioned. Ava, along with engineers, will be approving all those distributions. The next page behind that's a sideways page, and it shows you how the payments and so forth work. You can see your, this is just the debt that is supported by water sewer electric system, utility-supported debt service. We have some revenue bonds, we have some general obligations and certificates of obligations that are out there. And so, the total debt service, you can see currently for this, for the following, this current year's 2.3 million is going to go up to about 2.6, and then we got, we're adding on the new debt to 2017, which we've structured in to layer in with your existing debt and taking advantage of the lower interest rates, so we don't get, we don't get hurt too bad because the rates are so low that we were able to backload a lot of the principal out and still were able to get rates out there in about the 2% range. So, as you can see, once you add on the new totals, you get over here, and your payments are going to be just about 3 million bucks between now and 2022 that needs to come from water sewer electric, so out of that enterprise fund. And then it drops down after that to about 2.4 million for the remainder. So, all told, the average rate, your cost of funds for this transaction is 1.86%, 1.86. So, you did very, very well. I think the last rendition we did of this was 1.82, if I'm not right. Ava, Joey, yes. So, we hit it pretty close, even with a Fed increase last week and that sort of thing. And so, again, we got very nice interest rates. There's a semi-annual debt schedule behind that, showing that the first interest payment's going to come to next February, so it'll be in next year's budget. Okay, so you're fine for this year, but you're going to need to budget that additional amount for water sewer in your 17, 18 budget. Then there's a listing of costs of issuance. That's a budgeted number, with those final numbers are not yet decided. Again, those have to be approved and go back through the escrow. And most of this stuff is contractual. That's based on our contract for financial advisor, same with bond counsel. Attorney General has a SEP fee, and then there's pain agent escrow fee that the, and the water development board has to, we have to fill out forms, and those all have to be approved by them as well. So, that's how that's set up. The final page is really a Keith Kendall deal. He has to have this to prove up to the water development board that the useful life of the project is longer than the average life of the bonds. So, it shows the average life of the bonds there is 14 years, so obviously our distribution lines are a lot longer than less, a lot longer than that. Behind that's the schedule of events. We are here on March 21 in bold type, right there in the middle, to seek approval for the, to authorize the issuance of the certificates. The bond counsel will then turn around the documents that the city secretary has to be signed, will then be sent back to bond counsel for delivery to the attorney general's office, and ultimately, the closing date is targeted for April 19 to have funds in hand. That's my report, sir.
Thank you, John. Council, you got any questions for Mr. Martin? Councilman Parsons?
Who is bond counsel on this one, John?
Norton Rose Fulbright. Norton Rose Fulbright, the old Fulbright Jaworski firm. Now they're worldwide.
Just for my clarification, the amortization schedule includes the $17 million bond issued to Bill, the water treatment plant.
Absolutely. That's everything.
That's no further questions, Mayor.
Council, any more questions for Mr. Martin? Come on, Mr. Allen.
Come on, Tony.
Well, it's like this. Interest rate could be cut by, what, 1/10th percent?
To what now?
I'm just joking.
Not in your lifetime.
I'm always on him, Tony. No, I tell you, I was like Mickey, I want to make sure that everything that we're looking at is total indebtedness is how much in bonds.
Oh, boy. The utility-supported debt, I don't have that with me, Tony. I don't.
32 million and two, right?
You know, we've done 15 million here. We did 17 million a couple, year and a half or so ago, right?
Yeah.
And then there was maybe 8 million before that, so you're probably sitting on, you know, somewhere just south of 40 million, probably, total enterprise fund debt.
How much do you think?
Pardon me?
How much you say?
Just under 40 million, probably just shy of that.
That's right.
Principal outstanding. I'm sorry. You're showing, these are total payments here that you're seeing.
Yeah. Great job.
Thank you, sir.
Speedy job, too.
It was, again, it was a great team.
Shorter as your partner is, who could argue with him?
That's right, yeah.
Council, any more questions for John? Thank you, John, very much. If there's no more questions, we'll entertain a motion to accept the ordinance as read into the minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. I heard you. Any more discussion, council? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider approving the request of Barry and Patty Smith to voluntarily annex approximately 10.778 acres of land within the AWR McCray Survey Abstract Number 385 and the R Merit Survey Abstract Number 355 into the city's corporate boundary, proposed generally as Lot 2 and a portion of Lot 1, Block 1 of the 377 Retail Edition, and addressed as 300 Nichols Court. Scott, I'm going to call upon you to give us a little more background on that, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilman, Mr. Manager. What we have is an application from the property owner, the Smiths, who have a contract on this particular piece of property. You could see, there are two pieces of property. One's bounded in yellow. That's generally proposed as Lot 1. It fronts US 377, currently in the city. It's owned light commercial. The area to the backside of that, to the south, is outlined in a salmon color or a light orange color. That's the portion that's in our EPG outside the corporate boundary, which they would like to bring into the development process as well, proposed generally as Lot 2. So, this proposed voluntary annexation includes both properties owned by the Smiths, and they have a contract on each. They would like to bring the second portion in as a part of the plumbary plattonary zoning process for this area. The proposed use is generally as retail at this point in time. They don't want to disclose it. They still have an option on the property as they go through the due diligence phase and the plumbary plat phase. I can tell you, the plumbary plat is already under review by DRC. Hopefully, we can see the plumbary plat incorporating site plans within the next month, month and a half. As a part of the annexation process, you do have a service plan component. The service plan was written in the context of acknowledging the plumbary plat and having the burden of the developer providing all infrastructure to support every portion of the land, as well as to allow for connectivity points to adjoining portions of the land to expand the infrastructure. So, the consultant, the developer's consultant is addressing those DRC comments currently. This particular development only has one known residence on site. It's addressed as Nichols Court, as the mayor mentioned. This falls under Chapter 43 of the Local Government Code for sparsely populated annexations, where we don't need this to public hearing rotation and cooling period. We can consider the annexation proposal at one reading at city council, provided we accept the petition for voluntary annexation and adopt the ordinance, as the mayor mentioned in the caption. Mayor, I don't have anything other than to add beyond that. We have to answer any questions.
So, we'll be, we'll be holding on two different votes here then, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, it is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns for Scott on this item?
I do, Mayor.
Councilman Allen?
I'm glad they're, I'm glad they're wanting to bring it into the city, but are we going to have to furnish them anything now, when they come into the city?
Back to the service plan that's incorporated into the adoption ordinance, when, so we look at both hard and soft services. The only thing that occurs immediately upon annexation is the soft service, which is, in essence, police protection. So, once the mayor and the council adopts and signs the ordinance, it becomes immediately inside the corporate boundary, and police protection is a part of the soft service provisions. Hard services, like water sewer, your service plan is written in the context that this is going to be zoned interim holding, rule in nature, and it's not the city's, but the developer's intent to change the land use from interim holding, and at that time, they will adhere to our development policies and provide all hard services to support the development.
Isn't there a drainage problem back there by Kroger's?
That's something that their engineer will have to look at, investigate, do an analysis on, and correspond back to our city engineer on.
Okay. I mean, I'm for it, don't get me wrong, but I just think you're, I don't want the city winding up spending a lot of money to develop this, unless we get some good commercial.
Yeah, they know that they have to hire a engineer to submit analysis in stormwater management plans to our contract engineer.
Thank you, thank you, Scott.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons?
Scott, for my application in the comprehensive plan, what's the east-west street, how close is it going to run behind Kroger then?
It's going to run just to the east of Kroger, the building. So, the, I can tell you what they're focusing now on is Lot 1.
Lot 1.
Lot 2 is more of a supplemental afterthought. They're really kind of looking at more of a shell building in order to get the connections through. Their main focus, at least the option holder, is focusing on Lot 1, which is, in essence, largely in the city at this point.
I thought, I was thinking that road ran fairly close to that tail down there on the bottom.
So, if you look at, just to the east of the tip, the easternmost tip, there's Nichols Court. And that is, from what our investigations show, is a private road, not a dedicated public road. And that's one of DRC's questions back to the developer, is making sure we have access to those residences toward that portion through that road, whether or not it's going to be approved or maintained as a private road. And that's back in their ballpark. The first step of this process is to get the property into the city right now before we can zone it and plat it out.
Council, any more questions for Scott? If not, I'll do the first one here. I'll entertain a motion to consider granting this said petition.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Council, any more discussion on that one? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Consider granting this said petition is approved. Next, we will entertain a motion to consider adopting ordinance 17-20, providing for the voluntary annexation of the said property.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on that item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is also approved. Like I said, folks, this was kind of a short council meeting, but I was notified earlier that I needed to make an announcement for Ms. Julia Pennell, and when Julia Pennell wants you to make an announcement, you better make an announcement. But she has told me that the Fallen Hero Memorial, that Chili's tonight, if you go to Chili's, that they're giving 20% of their proceeds to that project. So, if you're hungry and want to go out to eat at Chili's, some of that proceeds goes to the, that Fallen Heroes Memorial. At this time, I'll now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session, that all the members are present. The city council will now go into the closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in these following sections. Section 551-071, consultation with the attorney, pending, we're not going to have attorney there, but pending complicated litigations on a settlement offer, and also Section 551-072, deliberation regarding real property, and Section 551-074, personnel matters, deputy secretary, position, city manager, contract. Council, go back in executive session.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to congratulate Mickey Madlock, who has been appointed our new deputy city secretary, and I would make a motion that we approve the hiring of Mickey Madlock as our deputy city secretary at a base rate of 15.
Second. I have a motion to accept Mickey Madlock as our deputy city secretary, and I have a second by Councilperson Rose Myers. Any more discussion on that one, council? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons.
I'd like to make a motion that the city manager be authorized to sign the settlement and release agreement as discussed in chambers.
We have a motion by Councilman Parsons. We have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion on that item, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the city council authorize the city manager to continue studying and evaluating the Granbury Independent School District proposal.
We have another motion by Councilman Parsons to allow the city manager to research, I guess, on the property out there. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Any more discussion on that item, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons.
I'd like to congratulate the city manager, Chris Kaufman, on the three-year contract that the city council is going to award him here in the following motion. I would like to make a motion that we authorize the mayor of the city of Granbury to I would like to make a motion that we authorize the mayor of the city of Granbury to execute the contract as discussed in chambers.
Second.
I have a motion to execute the contract for the city manager by Councilman Parsons and a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion on that item, Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved.
Mr. Mayor, I think everyone might like to say congratulations to Mr. Kaufman and to Ms. Matlock.
Congratulations.
That's dope. Good job over there.
We're excited to have both of them continuing on board.
If no more discussion, Council, this council meeting is adjourned.